I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation. And it is all for the good of this world.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to open the April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four? Public meeting of the zoning board of appeals of SAG-HARF.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four meeting?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. No, there are no corrections.
No.
Great. Now we move to correspondence requiring action. But I don't think we need to discuss this, right, Liz? Could I have a?
We're assuming meeting.
Right.
For eleven Bridge Street application.
So could I have a motion to approve the planning board's request to assume lead agency for eleven Bridge Street?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. So because we have a fairly long agenda tonight, we're also going to implement. Okay. Implement our procedural resolution, which allows applicants ten minutes to present. And then members of the public, three minutes. If additional time is warranted, that the board can grant that. So we'll move on to old business. And the first piece on the agenda for old business is forty one Redwood Road and twenty six Cove. Okay, so could I have a motion to adjourn? Forty forty one Redwood Road and twenty fifth Cove to the?
Can you pull out one more?
Sure. The audio went out, right?
Is the court's tenographer on?
I'm here.
Thank you.
I'm just sorry, while while we're on a minute recess, I can you just state your name? I can't see anybody's name tags from here. So if the chairman can just, I still won't be able to see it. Can you just say like your name or?
Right here is Hamel Willoughby.
Wait, hang on one second, one second.
Turn your. Hey, there you go.
Okay, go ahead. Tell me the names. I'm sorry.
Hamel Willoughby.
Okay.
Maguire.
Thank you.
God Baker is the chairman.
Thank you.
Val Florio.
Thank you.
Damon Brown.
Thank you.
And our village attorney is Elizabeth Bell.
Thanks.
Great, so when is the May meeting?
May fifteenth.
Fifteenth, okay. So could I have a motion to adjourn forty one Redwood Road and twenty sixth Cove Road to the May fifteenth meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, excuse me, May is twenty first, isn't it?
Yes, you're right. Sorry about that.
Okay, okay. So I guess I need a new motion, but I have a motion to adjourn forty one Redwood Road and twenty sixth Cove Road to the twenty, the May twenty first.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Next, in old business, we have twenty Henry Street. Is there someone here to speak to twenty Henry? So could you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Katie Frank from Big City, C. Located at two hundred and ninety eighth Street.
Great, do you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you. You may proceed.
I'm just gonna set up my screen share so I can help write plan up. I'm just gonna ask that Carrie have it show on that screen as well, so forty people to view it. While she is out, I'm starting with introduction. So I represent the owner of twenty Henry Street, located on the corner of Henry and William Street and the Village. The lot is about fifty hundred square feet, pretty undersized. The applicant is proposing a moderate sized pool and what would be the rear yard, but because of the corner lot, it is in part of the front yard. And so applicant is proposing a. Oh, sorry, it was the little word that came up. So applicant is requesting a variance of block coverage of point nine four percent. So we're at twenty five, a diagonal side on the phone from its twenty five. And the setback of eighteen point eight feet for the pool on the William Street side. We do not believe an unreasonable change can be produced by requested variances. In addition to. Proposing a dry well to mitigate any possible runoff issues, having the thought of imposing a nice twelve foot evergreen hedge along the side of William Street. So it'd be completely screened from William Street. Whether the benefits sought may achieve by some other method, because it's a corner lot, there is no other physical method. Whether it's substantial, as far as the coverage and retaining wall, we think it is not substantial. What we do acknowledge that the request for a front yard setback is substantial, but we believe it is mitigated by the screening and the. And the dry well, whether there will be an adverse impact on the physical environmental conditions, we don't believe so. In fact, we have a very generous planting plan that we submitted with the application, including corials and pollinating and a lot more vegetation to the premises. And it was self-created, but it is not affirmative of the application. If the board has any questions at, oh, can I have, oh, sorry, can I have it shown? If there's any questions on this kind of behalf too.
I guess my main questions, I know he's trying to line it up with the center line of the house and the slate patio, but it really could be moved much closer to the. West property line and be more conforming.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it was just the, from a design perspective, I would also like to point out that there is a substantial, between like a seven and ten foot buffer. Between the edge of the pavement and the premises, and there is no sidewalk, and there's also plantings there, so from William Street, there is a considerable buffer. Right now, there's a kind of sad looking primate there, and there is a landscaping plan that we submitted. We are proposing the Emerald Green, which will be a solid, very tall, nine to twelve foot hedge. So it will be very difficult to not have flipper moving straight. Also submitted, so was taken from the interior of the premises facing out. So the other property lines are very screened, so you can't see the house on the other side, so presumably you wouldn't be able to see the pool.
I'd make a comment. When when this, when the original structure was built, which was seven or eight years ago, the would, the structure that had been there. Was a post-World War II house that was torn down, and this house was built in this place. It required significant variances, especially pyramid. And there was quite a discussion, and it was more or less an exchange and an agreement. That the pool would be dropped in exchange for getting the variances that allowed the house to be built. So now we're back several years later to install that same pool.
So I did review that determination. We weren't representing the client at that point, but some important things to note. During that application process, not only was the pool removed, but the pyramid intrusion was reduced by over sixty percent. They lowered the roof ridge by seven feet from the initial application to what was approved. And we stuck within the footprint. And then the determination, the board acknowledged that it was actually an improvement to the neighborhood. What the application was seeking to do. So while the pool was removed, I did review the termination. There were other several factors that led to the approval of the renovation of that house.
Yes, but I remember that the the original application had a very significant pyramid intrusion. That's why it was.
But there's still, there's still were variances granted.
Yes.
To build the houses there, and all agreed that the house aesthetically is a, in addition to the neighborhood over what had been there. I'm just making that point. Also, the point of screening the pool. In the historic area of the village, certainly we would rather have screening than to see the pool. But it's also not the ideal that every yard be completely screened, so that when you're walking down a street, all you see is a wall of vegetation. So I just make that point. That would just be one possible thing that's undesirable.
Especially that would be, if it weren't a corner lot, that would be the side yard. And so applicant, of course, is also seeking some type of privacy for himself from the road. So while the Henry Street facade is very clear and prominent, when you go around, of course, the homeowner would like privacy. So that is another reason for the generous screening.
I'd also make the point that that our chairman made, which is that part of our mission is to reduce the variance that needs to be granted wherever possible. And so if the pool was moved closer to the other side of the lot, you could, because this is a large variance, thirty five feet is required and eighteen eight feet, eighteen point eight feet is what's provided. So if it could be moved. Even eight eight feet, so that you'd have fifteen feet from each side, that that would be a relatively small variance from that, from the William Street side.
It would get to twenty six point eight.
So those are my only points.
Val, do you have any? They're they're good points, because the, there's a tendency with the screening to make these pools. Is that the result is this wall of greenery and the entire village. Is turned into somewhere that there's a blockade for forgotten drawing the architecture of the houses any longer. You know, obviously, screening is important, but to Chairman Baker's point, as well as Mr. Maguire's, if the pool were rotated. Or moved, it's less of a variance. Having said that, the swimmable portion of this pool is eight by thirteen, and there are some steps. So it's not a large pool, but I think by dint of having to screen it, especially in the prominent roads. It would be nice if it could potentially move over. However, I see the alignment on the doors, and that's what's driving this location. But other than that, I don't have comments.
And even?
Well, this is a non-conforming, and you look at the house is eleven point seven on William Street and the pool is eighteen. This is non-conforming, but I would be acceptable to the pool.
I would add to that, because of the width, it's being eight feet, which is quite small. It doesn't lend itself to a play pool. It's more a relaxation, a plunge type pool, which is like an oversized spa. So eight feet is a reasonable request to some degree. And I think that makes uniqueness to the application.
So just sorry to clarify for the report, Florial, are you comfortable with the location, or are you, you would prefer?
I. As mentioned, our mission is to help see if we can decrease these requests. It's just something if you might consider, and if not, that's up to us to weigh in with that, so.
David, do you have any comments?
I think the pool could be moved, but it does mess up the whole symmetry of the facade, so that's something.
Yeah, I'm kind of pretty, this is off balance, where you walk out the door and the pool's kind of off off center. I do believe the benefits sought by the symmetry would outweigh a couple extra feet from William Street, especially considering the buffer. Between the road and the and the property line and and the screening, I don't think it would be, the difference would be noticeable. From the neighboring properties or from the rest of the community, whereas if you went up, as well, at the back door, it would be quite noticeable to the homeowner.
Are there any complaints from neighbors?
No comments.
Is there a reason the retaining wall can't be to code?
Well, it's because it's it angles back. It's it this part.
Three feet out?
Well, no, it is three five. This is three feet out, but because it has to return for some reason, it's just that, it's actually just the returns that are in.
Okay.
Violation, so it's a, that's minor, actually.
Okay.
We would want to state that that's what's going on, though.
I do believe we received a letter of support from the neighbor last month.
I know there were, there were letters, though, in opposition.
I don't think we have.
I saw one that somebody was worried about people falling into the pool or something.
Right, yes.
Well, we, okay, because we have to go to pool gates.
So, well, one question is, where is the pool equipment?
Let me pull up the survey.
I don't see it. Do you? Oh, it's over.
It's on the left.
Okay, so it's on the top.
Eleven point eight.
So.
The building is ten point seven.
Oh, oh, right, right, right. You see it?
Yeah, it's right over here.
So we're trying by the AC.
Right, yep. And so where the pool fence is doing what? It's surrounding the property, and then how does it come back to the house?
Sure, so I add, I put the survey up on the shared screen.
Right.
Can you see my mouse?
Yep.
Okay, so over here, there is a gate.
Yep.
And then it follows the property line back.
Yep.
Follows the property line here, comes forward, and then, see where I proposed fence?
Yes.
On the inside, and then it meets the house there.
Oh, okay, so there's no gate on the other side?
Yeah, there's just gonna be a gate from the driveway.
Okay. I guess at this point, we'll check in to see if there's any study from the public to ask questions. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the left, I'm sorry, twenty Henry Street? Carrie, is there anybody on Zoom?
Anybody now?
No.
Yeah, close the call.
Yeah, I don't know. Do the board members have any other questions or concerns? It's just. Is there any way you can get rid of the point nine four percent of lot coverage to eliminate that variance?
Yes.
Does that make any difference, anybody?
I'd like to see the setback variance reduced. By splitting it with the other side.
Do you want?
Especially given the history of this, where there was an agreement that there was never going to be a. Informal agreement, not legally binding.
I don't know. Are you, let's see, so Ham, you're basically in favor?
I'm just as I is.
Just as I is. I don't know. I'm sort of on the fence about this, Val. I don't know where you stand. Do we have Alex?
Yes.
Okay. Alex, do you have any comments about twenty Henry Street?
You're muted, Alex.
Not not really, because I had Zoom trouble again, and I didn't get in here until about four forty-five or so. So I'm kind of late to the discussion, and I think the weigh-in would be not entirely responsible.
Okay. I guess I'm trying to decide whether we would close this and vote on it, or have, I can go back to the owner with some questions about adjustments. How do you, do you feel strongly about this one way or the other, Val?
I do think moving it several feet doesn't create a benefit to the public versus benefit to the applicant, and I think I like it where it is.
There's a precedent.
Size and scale.
There's a precedent that from now on.
Yeah.
Instead of.
It's making it unique, you know, a swimming pool by definition, I think because it's small. It's gotten down to eight, it's starting off at eight.
I'm not making it smaller. I just want to move it over so less variance has to be granted, so somebody doesn't come in next month and say, well.
The architect draws.
Be at eighteen feet, you know, as well.
Yeah, if I, Chairman Baker, you in agreement with reduction?
Um, I'm. I'm sort of in the. Between the two. I mean, I always think it's a good idea if we can somehow reduce and eliminate variances. I do understand the concept where the pool is, but I wonder if there's another, and this is one design solution.
That's sort of, isn't that sort of balancing aesthetics against the actual code, and our mission to reduce variances whenever possible?
Correct, yes, yeah.
I believe it's the benefits sought outweighing the detriment to the community.
Right.
The detriment of a couple more feet.
Well, it's a substantial amount, though. It's eight feet. Do you have the the survey, Alex, of twenty Henry Street?
That's more than eight. I mean, it's supposed to be thirty five feet.
No, 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 I mean, we could move it eight.
Yes, yes.
I mean, it's not like just one foot.
Right. No, I would want to move it the full amount.
Right.
Eight feet, so that it's down to fifteen feet on the other side of the property. So anyway, that's my. I would vote no based on the way it stands now.
Just trying to get an idea of where Alex might be, because it's sort of a split.
He doesn't want to get into it, he said.
But Alex will be a voting member on this, correct?
Yeah, I'm just trying to track down the the.
Would it be helpful if I shared my screen again?
Yes.
Yes, it would. And maybe Scott, you could just kind of summarize what the situation is.
So you can see the screen now?
Yes.
Survey, okay, so the swimming pool is at the moment centered on a center line of the house. And it's eighteen point eight feet from the street property line, but in reality, it could move toward the west property line another eight feet, because that's twenty three and it could be fifteen. So. It makes it more conforming if it moves eight feet over. And there's also a point nine seven or point nine four. Increase in lot coverage that could possibly be eliminated, so they were, they were at twenty five percent instead of twenty five point nine four percent. To eliminate that variance totally. Just wondering how you feel.
That's by, that's by essentially moving the pool to the left by eight feet?
Yes. And then they'd take out that point nine four percent somewhere.
I'm sorry, I'm not following how their lot coverage goes down just by moving.
Well, no, not just by moving the pool. They'd have to decrease something to get the. To get the lot coverage down. It's more about moving the pool. What do you feel about leaving the pool where it is centered on the house for aesthetics? Versus the zoning code, or moving it to try to comply more with the zoning code? And.
As in violation of the rear yard setback?
It's the, it's the setback from the street, so it's supposed to be thirty five and it's eighteen point eight. It could be twenty six point eight. If they moved it to the left.
Oh, I see. And and where where are we? I don't know if Liz has advised us, but on precedent, or Tim, who knows a lot?
Well, I just would say that the village law also directs the board in granting area variances to quote, grant the minimum variance that is chilting necessary. And adequate, and at the same time, preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and help safety on purpose. So there is a, there is a direction to the board to try and grant the minimum variances necessary. And so if you do want her to seek to reduce the lot coverage, even that alone would require endearment, so she can amend her survey. Or like that. I think you've given adequate feedback, and they can amend their plan and come back. That's up to you guys.
Right, so I'm just trying to get a feeling for you, from you, Alex, about how you feel, because the vote here is very split. And you're not the deciding vote.
I guess what I want to know is how often and by how much do we often give variances for a thirty five foot setback from the road for pools? Is there?
Well, we just did it on corner lot. We just had, well, on the agenda tonight for decision, we have, what is it, Jefferson?
Oh, no, that was last.
Sorry.
Already Jefferson's coming back, I suppose.
Where is, what number is that? Okay, I'm sorry. Where is that fishing?
In twenty twenty on that one seventy fifth and Row.
Twenty eight Jefferson Street, sorry. We, I can't remember what the number was. What is it? It was. Well, there we allowed thirty two point four feet, where thirty five feet is required. So this is quite significantly different. This is eighteen. So it's a, it's a, it's a much larger variance.
It's fifty percent.
And it, yes, it's almost fifty percent of what's required, and we, the last time we'd had this, we allowed thirty two point four feet, or thirty five feet, close required.
Oh, that's a very small, it's a very small variance. Well, then in that case, if there's really not much precedent for 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 granting such a large variance, i.e. fifty percent variance. Roughly close, close to that. Then I'm I'm more inclined to deny it and ask the applicant to go back and try and be creative to come up with something else. I will say, I'm very sympathetic with the applicant, because I very much understand why you wouldn't want to have your pool be visible from the rear of the house. And yet kind of offset, it's distracting to the eye aesthetically. It's not ideal. I'm sympathetic, but that sounds like a pretty big variance to ask for.
So why don't you? Maybe we'll adjourn this, and why don't you go back to your client and see, discuss whether or not he is open to the idea of moving it and also reducing. The the lot coverage to get down to twenty five percent and eliminating that variance. The other variances, you can't really eliminate. Does that seem?
Can I, can I ask you to clarify? In the application, they're going up to twenty five point nine percent. They were at a lower level before?
Yes, because there was no pool in the backyard.
We're at twenty one point four.
Twenty one point four percent.
I got you. Yeah, so we're asking not to come in and ask for variance for something they they could, with a little creativity, avoid.
Right, it's not like the the twenty eight Jefferson case where they already had the lot coverage variance, and they were using it in a different way. This is new. Lot coverage variance.
Okay.
I know I'm over my ten minutes, but I will submit other determinations as proven, because this board has granted, especially with corner lots. Variances for for a pool in a front yard to twenty feet, or a pool that was about twice as big in twenty twenty, but I will submit that.
That that would be very helpful for me, because I'm quite sympathetic in the kind of fairness issue, which is. You know, I don't like the building on worse and worse precedent, but I also am sympathetic with folks who feel like if other people were allowed to do it, it's only fair. So, you know, I think that would be helpful information to have, if you have it.
Alex, I just want to state once more for Alex's benefit that when this house was built, there was an agreement to grant variances that allowed the house in exchange for not building a pool at all.
Oh, I didn't know that.
It wasn't a legal, no, but it was an understanding, and the owner represented himself. It was an understanding. I had said previously, it was not legally binding, but. It means something. It truly means something. There was a specific discussion. If you drop the pool, and you're absolutely correct, the house is reduced, but it still needed significant setback variances, et cetera, et cetera. There was an agreement made, we could, which we can debate another time. I just wanted to state my thought on it. It's my thought. I'm entitled to it, so that Alex would have it. Thank you.
I tend to be more sympathetic, because the house, where it's placed, in terms of the position of the house, especially on William Street, is eleven point seven. And on the, the opposite side is ten point seven, so, um, I, I'm happy leaving the pool where it is.
But just to understand him, we granted them those variances to have the house that close to those properties.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so what we're gonna.
The house there prior.
Right.
They agreed to stay within the footprint of the house.
Yeah, but because.
No, this house is much bigger than that.
Yeah, and also the house is in the other direction. It was also rectangular in the other direction. What I want to do is adjourn this because we're done. Um, so could I have a motion to adjourn, uh, Twenty Henry Street to the twenty-one May meeting?
So move.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very, thank you, thank you very much. Now we're moving on to new business. And first on the agenda is twelve Union Street. And again, could you state your name and address for the record? Oh wait, could I have a motion to open the public hearing for twelve Union Street?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Could you state your name and address for the record?
He's from, he's from Manhattan Street.
Great, thank you, can you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Great, thank you, proceed.
Thank you. Um, so I represent the owner of twelve Union Street Village. Uh, this plot is unique, uh, it goes all the way from Union Street to Jefferson Street. Uh, we are here requesting a variance for a garage, you know, poolhouse to be located in the front yard. Um, but there really is no rear yard in this property, it's all front yard. I would start by saying that there's an existing pool about forty feet from Jefferson Street, applicant will probably be moved that about seventy-four feet and coincided size by two hundred square feet. Um, so we're requesting a garage and poolhouse, but both of the structure do need a thirty-five foot setback. Uh, we do not believe in counter violence change, we will be producing branding of these variances, um, in the projects and poolhouse, our own structures in the village and all. Going to act as screening from the pool. And also there's a pergola that obviously involved with going to be removed on the property that is very close, um, through the Jefferson Street. Um, because there's front yard and no rear yard, we don't think there's any other way to achieve the benefit sought by the applicant. We don't think these variances are standalone and we are leading the front yard setback in both of the counters. Um, and you don't believe there's going to be an adverse effect in fact, the one I remember petitions with the premises were not refusing any covered variances. And while it was self-created, it is not. I'm joined here by Marcus Zemke, the architect. Marcus, you could be kind enough to put just a site plan up or a visual.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Marcus Zemke. And sorry, what was the second you need?
Uh, your address? We need your address.
Thirty-six East Twenty-third Street, City.
Great, can you raise your right hand?
New York City.
Just swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you.
Um, I think I need to, oh, I can share, I'm sorry, yep, I'll pull up the.
Yeah, maybe we can start with this side. By prioritizing the variance.
Uh, well, I question that too, except that it's in the front yard, I don't know if there is a rear yard in this property. Like two fronts and two sides, I'm just correct now?
Yes.
So you just need to confirm with the buildings.
Okay, great, thank you.
So Marcus is sharing the, the survey at the moment, so you have to screen from the bottom, like the relatively least residence and a proposing of a garage and a poolhouse. The existing pool, you'll see in the lighter color right here where the proposed garage is, so we're moving that pool back, rotating it, and straightening it by two hundred. The board has any questions?
So how is it screened from Jefferson Street? I, I see a fence and a gate, but what is the fence?
So right now we have existing edge of Holly, uh, Marcus, do you want to throw off the photo of the, there's the thing.
Right. So that, the parking is staying where it is and the hedge is going to remain. And then what is the, what is the fence going to be? That's that, where the gate is up against the little house, because you will be able to see in the sides. Just want to make sure that the pool, I understand there's a building there, the proposed poolhouse, we just want to make sure the pool is screened from the street.
Well, the, yeah, the pool now is not screened at all.
Right.
It's standing at the driveway, the pool is pointing there, the pergola eighteen feet.
Right.
All right there, we're proposing, yeah, so here's the, you know, see the pergola is here.
Yeah.
And then the pool is on the corner right now, you see the state.
Yeah.
So what we're looking to do, we're going to, uh, move it back and rotate it and that's the structure, garage essentially where that pool is. So that when you pull or when you walk by, you're going to see a garage.
Well, what I'm getting at though is you also see diagonally and you're going to see sort of between the garage and the poolhouse. I'm just wondering what that fence is where the gates are between the poolhouse and the garage and the poolhouse and the existing shed.
Sure, Marcus, do you have an image of the, of the fence?
I'm just wondering, is it, you know, solid, open?
Yeah, I think, I think the idea was, is ultimately to follow, um, some of the, the logic of the existing fence that's here. Uh, we will obviously, uh, make sure it's conforming to pool code compliance, but, uh.
So it'll be basically a pick, sort of a picket style fence?
Yeah, exactly. And they're only, they're, they're short stretches of fencing, it's not a, a substantial amount of this style at the, between those structures.
Great. And then where is the pool equipment? Because it's not, I don't see where it's shown anywhere. And then I know it can't fit in the poolhouse because there's no space for it.
Um, I think, so, yeah, sorry, I think it's, it's, uh, it's meant to sit under the roof of the existing shed, the, within that carport structure. So it's, it's not, it's sitting kind of within that footprint.
Right, so that needs to be noted on the plan and the survey, just so we know where that is.
Of course.
Um, I mean, otherwise, I don't, I'm fine with this, I don't know what everybody else.
The carport stays exactly as it is now, more or less, Jeff.
Uh, correct.
Do any?
I think, I think the.
I'm in agreement with the plan.
Any public?
Yeah, do you, no, board members have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, um, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to twelve Union Street? Barry, anybody on Zoom? And if, I don't particularly with any letters or, you know, we got to do. Have any?
No.
No. So are, is everybody comfortable with this now?
Yeah.
Wow, I think as the applicant stated, the, the existing pool is not screened, but it will be screened. Um, worse would it been helpful for this application if you're drawing two buildings as AR side by side? So you can have a bit of perspective of what happens in between as Chairman Baker pointed out, what kind of fence looks that perspective to look like. But there will be more, I mean, some of the fence and people's dis. So type of objections.
Um, and I guess we'll make it part of a, a condition is that the, that fence is more solid than open?
Would have been, as I said, helpful to see the two structured side by side drawn in elevation and what that fence looked like to help create the screening, but, uh.
And probably the ARB is going to refire that, just so you.
I also think applicant is going to want as much privacy as possible.
Right, yeah.
But since there will be a fence, it's, uh, you know, I, I personally don't think to see it, certainly won't need to show that to the ARD.
So, um, can we, uh, Liz, can we just sort of a conditional approval that they get the survey with the note, uh, notice of where the pool equipment is located and we can move forward? Because nobody, Alex, do you have any comments about?
Just keep it open.
Keep it open?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is Alex still there?
Yes.
I keep on forgetting I'm on mute. Uh, no, I don't have any comments, it's, it seems pretty strong.
And you're favorable towards the application?
I am, yeah.
Okay, great. So, uh, could I have a motion to adjourn, uh, twelve Union Street to our May twenty-first meeting?
So move.
Seconded. And could I also have a motion?
Oh, favor, aye.
Aye, on to it.
Aye.
And could I also have a motion to direct our attorney to write a favorable decision for twelve Union Street? Which would include receiving a survey that locates the pool equipment and also, um, the condition that the fence between the buildings is more solid than open. I'll do it, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is one twenty-sixth Day Street. Great, could I have a motion to open the public hearing for one twenty-sixth Day Street?
I'll make a motion to open one twenty-six.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, could you state your name and address for the record?
Thanks for a lot, Forty-five Division Street, going to get active today.
Great.
Um, Sagon LLC, um, I think I've worked with the people that LLC call over as well as other neighbors, um, who I do know want to get out of here. So I don't hope to have them just give their review first, but also have another letter of support from the neighborhood. Would love to do that first so they can.
Um, if you want to.
Hi, how you doing?
You need to step forward to the podium, please? Could you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Jeffrey Martin, I live at one thirty Bank Street, it's directly to the east side, it's on the neighbor on the property line.
Great, could you raise your right hand? Could you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great, you may proceed.
My wife and I, Janine, she's behind me here, we reviewed the plans submitted. We think Paul worked very hard at finding to do something pleasing in his village. It seems to fit the neighboring houses, we show our support and we want to perform this, so they can have the review, so. Whether his neighbor will support what he's doing, we think is a pleasing structure and we think he's taking care of you, making the save on his path.
Great.
I said, if you just, if you wanted to come down and purchase and show our support.
Great, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you. Uh, did you have anybody else to?
No, that's it, I can get them out of the.
Great, thank you.
Um, just to go over the high level of the application, this lot is about twelve thousand five hundred eighty-one square feet. It is one twenty-six, no, it's one twenty-sixth Day Street. Um, right now the property has a, what I would consider conforming to the exception of a pyramid violation. Uh, on the house, it's pre-existing. Um, as I said, the only, the only reason we're here for the over fifty percent is because there's a hundred and seventy-five cubic feet of German violation. Honestly, we didn't discover it until the plans were done, uh, it's not normally something you're looking for. Uh, so we are here requesting a variance from that section of the code. Um, we're also requesting a variance to be able to build an addition that totals one thousand five hundred thirteen square feet and that's spread over, spread over various areas of the house. The total cubic square feet that we're asking for pyramid relief of is seven hundred twenty-two. Which would bring the total house to eight hundred ninety-seven cubic feet out of here. Um, one of the other, I, things that I want to point out about the house and, and the COVID, the COVID, not a scheme for the property is that House Department approval has been besieged and there will be an ADU on this property as well. So I think it is a benefit to the community, um, to have one of those ADUs on the property, housing is legal definitely. I don't really, I don't know that there is any other method to, for the applicant to obtain the result that he's looking for other than to ask this for a variances. Um, there are no other, there is no, the benefit to the applicant greatly outweighs any benefit to the community, particularly in light of the fact that he is in the end of the property, you need lot of property setbacks in all regards. Um, even with the addition of the ADU and the pool. Um, and so what we're here today for is simply the expansion of residence. And as I said, Paul Alter is the architect, so I will have him speak to you directly about the place.
Okay, great, thank you. Great, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Paul Alter, I'm the resident of one sixteen, uh, Sagon.
Great.
I've been a resident of Sagon for thirty-four years.
Great, could you raise your right hand?
Yes, I swear to tell the whole.
Great, thank you.
I'm an architect that's been practicing in Sagon for over thirty years. I care deeply about the integrity of the village and I spend a lot of time thinking about how we might improve this little one-story ranch in a way that would be besting the neighborhood. If you all have photographed the sheet that shows the context of this one-story ranch, which actually is out of the context with the rest of the neighborhood. But if you look at sheet, page four, page five, you'll see the felt inside and the idea of how this design comes to work with communities and the fact that most of the buildings on Day Street have a cable roofed form facing the street. Whereas this particular ranch, this just a one-story, uh, would need one facing the street. So I spent the time thinking about how we could develop a design which could have a minimal variance, it does, but really fit in.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions, one is you're keeping the existing house and, and reusing it, but you're not staring at it.
Getting the first story of the existing house completed, except in the rear where we're mahashing an existing previously non-original foundation, which is only on a crawl space. And the right side of the house, as you look from the street, will be kept as a one-story element. And then we're popping up on top of the two-story home. And also, the left side of the house, there's a shed addition, which is diminishing its volume and mass. It's a little less intrusive on style.
Great. And then, um, the other thing that I, I noticed was there is, you don't have, uh, your GFA calculations on here anyway, I did them and I believe you're conformed. Oh, you do, okay, and we're conformed.
It's a fifteen hundred and thirteen square foot, it's a house and three hundred and three square feet in the accessory structure.
No, that's not, the GFA is really just for the house.
GFA is like twenty-eight hundred.
Right, but we just need it on, uh, the plans or something, um, because it's, it's not anywhere.
Okay.
So it's the first floor and the second floor, you know, just the basics.
You need the GFA requirements. They didn't need the GFA for the fifty percent lot. They didn't need the GFA for the fifty percent lot.
Right, but that's not, that's different.
They were over GFA.
Right, but that. Right.
No, we're not.
No, because what I, I think what I calculated is that they're at.
I think I'm in.
They're at twenty eight, forty eight, and the. The site will handle three thousand six point forty eight, something like that. So, but we just need it. Somewhere on it. That's not the fifty percent thing, that's just GFA. The other thing is.
Cover sheet, actually. Name is little short.
He has square footage.
Yeah, but it's, there is some GFA, I think that's right.
It doesn't. Now, GFA.
We just need it on here somewhere. We know it's.
I just spent a lot of time looking for that, and we can't find it.
Yes, well, that's why we're trying to get everybody to put the GFA on plans. So, the other thing that I noticed is that unless I'm. Crazy, is that you didn't do the pyramid from the street. You did it from the sides only?
No, it's from the street. Front to side, I think four hundred is.
No, those are from the side.
Well, that's from the top. That's the front of the cell, the lower end.
No, no, I know. I, you've projected the pyramid from the two sidelines.
Right.
But you have to project it from the, the, the street nine. It's a pyramid, so it's on all four property lines. So you're missing, if you come up, I can show you. If you look at. If you look at this sheet. If you just come up here. And this is just my, but from here to there.
Right.
There's a pyramid line.
Okay.
And there to there. So there's a chunk of the roof here.
Right.
Second floor, that's not included in your pyramid areas.
We can, we can.
Because it's from all four.
I got you.
Front of the line. And because this is so low, it gives unfortunate.
Yeah, so it's the funny thing when we had the survey done, I didn't, I thought my property on was much.
Right.
To the street.
Right.
And I didn't realize like it's.
Yes, way.
Like there's some huge setback for.
Yeah.
Or the road.
Yeah.
But that's not true on the living.
Oh.
With that.
Yeah, a detriment to you.
Yeah, which I don't know. Real.
Uh, I don't know. Do any other board members have any other questions? That was all.
How do you feel about the?
So what is the proposed? What percent now the twenty eight fifty represent? From the initial nonconforming one thousand three hundred and thirty four?
Okay. Okay, um, I'll, I will answer this question, but I will answer it. And then, and then give you a disclaimer on that, because the answer to the question that you're asking about the fifty percent is, I think, a hundred and thirty six percent increase. But what I will say about that increase is that the only reason we're subject to that increase, the house currently meets setback. And is conforming in all respects, with the exception of a pyramid there. So, my theory on that next moment, Paul, a little bit about this, is. That conceivably, you can come in tomorrow with a building for an application, take that hundred and seventy five feet off the house with ARB approval, and not be subject to that regulation. It's a little bit of a strange regulation to impose on something that.
Yeah, okay.
You know, you don't really know.
That's what I wanted. Yeah, okay, I get it.
Right, you don't really know that it exists.
Yeah.
And you don't know you have a problem really until you start formulating plans. It's not something, it's not an uncomplimentary that was very obvious.
So it's just the pyramid that makes it.
That's the only.
Okay, I get it. That was my question. Thanks.
That's the only thing that pulls us into that fifty percent.
Yeah, okay.
Seven hundred and seventy five.
Good.
Hey, that answers that question?
Yep.
Uh, anybody else have any other questions?
I mean, the house will be a great addition to the streetscape of Bay Street.
I guess the only.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I guess the only, um, concern will be how much more. The protrusion into the sky plane will be with that additional amount.
Yeah, we're like seven hundred and thirty six cubic feet now. I think we would probably still be. Maybe we would be under twelve hundred. I'd love to do that.
Yeah.
Will we, will we calculate that if we have to renotice?
Right, yes.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem if it was around twelve hundred.
Did you notice anything, Val?
No, I, the only thing likewise is that when we draw the elevation, you know, to see, um. How that pyramid would be the sets from her from all four sides.
Right, I don't think it's going to have any impact on the rear of the.
No, no.
So we will, we will create a joint like eight four hundred that shows you that intrusion with this guy.
Right. Other than that, I can only compliment your, uh, application. It's a nice improvement to the. Alex's consistent with the architecture of the village and. Have no. Comment objection at all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Alex, do you have any? Comments? Did we lose Alex? Alex, you muted?
I keep on forgetting I'm muted. I'm sorry. No, I, I, I don't have objections. I, I like the look of this house. I think the, uh, variances are. Reasonable, um, and. I'm, I'm, okay.
Great, thank you. So, um, there are just those couple of things to correct the. Gross floor area calculation somewhere and that pyramid adjustment. Um, so could I have a motion to adjourn one twenty six Bay Street to the May twenty first meeting?
So move second? Twenty first.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is sixty three. Main Street, page.
They're back.
Oh, wow.
Not open last. Could I have a motion to open a public hearing for sixty three Main Street?
Make that motion.
On, uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. I'm from five to two hundred streets, Sag Harbor, New York, for the applicant, sixty three Main. I also have the new, um, Salvatore Chappelle, who is the project architect.
Great. Could you, you step forward, just get this over. Could you state your name and address for the record?
South Sisarabi, two zero six Academy Street, Bayport, New York.
Great. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you.
Um, so we are here for, um, someone's individual application to the purpose board. Um, we are here to expand paid restaurants. Um, it's a legal expansion to the second floors from a new some second floor. Um, and so we are here today to request a variance from the regulation in the village code, which. Limits our square footage from three thousand square feet. Um, the total size of the restaurant is over exactly nonconforming at this minute. That just goes to three thousand square feet, and we need. Creating a space upstairs, and the total restaurant size will be six thousand five hundred and ninety. Where the store is.
Yeah.
Um, there are, the only thing that's being added to the property, as you can see from the plans, is a second story. Outdoor refrigeration area. I think that's indicated that it will. Is that what that is? Um, on the plans, there's no other addition proposed. There's no other facade chain. There's nothing else, at least other than the change of nations. For the total building second. Um, so that is all. Uh, as far as a benefit to the community, this town has been operating for many, many years now and has served many. Villaguard is a good. And has lovely brought lots of many, many, continue to do so. Um, this expansion is the result of a legal expansion in seating. That required additional space. So just one way of history, the village ward publicly, stated about eight or nine years ago. Time flies. Um, changed the village codes so that parking was changed for, parking requirements were changed for restaurant seating from. One parking space for every three seats to one parking space for every four seats. What that enabled the vast majority of restaurants to do without issue in the village. Is to expand the number of seats in the restaurant, if they had the correct enough space. In this instance, because we don't need fire code downstairs, we want to increase those number of seats legally as we can. And bring those stairs up, those seats upstairs. With an additional kitchen. To service the upstairs restaurant.
So you don't need anymore, the, the seats don't. Force you to, um, get more parking spaces. You're using your parking spaces to get more seats, basically.
Exactly. It's where, you know, it's a strange calculation that has come into play, and this is the only situation that I've been in. I've, I've increased rest seating in most of the restaurants in the village. This is the only one where they didn't have the physical space to do so, and so we decided to. Go upstairs with it. Um, so the other addition to the property will be an elevator and ADA access.
Is backpage included in the square feet?
Backpage is not included in the square feet. Um. Council and I actually have a meeting tomorrow, because this is also in front of the planning board. Um, there is some question as to the seating at backpage and what its use is. It doesn't appear to me, and Liz and I actually have a meeting. Scheduled for tomorrow morning to speak about the details of this. Um, but I don't believe the seats are limited in the back. The use of those seating, how those seats are utilized is limited. So for restaurant purposes, for restaurant seating, the site is not going to exceed a hundred and sixty five seats. And that's the legal limit for the number of seats on site. It's not going to exceed that irrespective of how many seats are at backpage. Restaurant seating.
So one sixty five is allowed and one sixty five is what's going to be there.
Is what's going to be there.
Regardless of what happens with backpage.
Exactly.
Because I mean, you know, the backpage has gone through a lot of discussion with the planning board, and. There are people that won't eat at page because of the bad feeling from that era.
Understood.
It's still, some people still describe that as a waiting area, except all of us have had dinner out there many times, and it's filled with tables.
Interestingly, I have not, but, um, that's why.
Trust me, it's a full, it's a full, there's probably ten to fifteen tables out there. All summer.
Liz and I have spoken about that.
With the full menu, it's not a waiting area.
Okay.
By any stretch of the imagination.
First of all, it's not open right now, so it's.
But shouldn't it be included in the square feet? Uh, well, let me tell you what, what, I'm just curious, and you were, you had a lot to do with putting together the code when three thousand square feet.
I can tell you.
Was the limit. So if we're going from that to six thousand, I'm just trying to wrap my head around.
I can explain that.
Why would we? Why would we double what the code allows?
Okay, I can explain exactly what we were thinking when we did that. I didn't want to be preaching about it, but it was there, so I kind of know the answer. Um. When the two thousand and eight code was redone, there was really a lot of thought put into first floor uses. Um, if you know, if. There is a use variance for one, but we eliminated real estate offices on the first floor. And the whole idea of the comp plan at that point was to make sure that we had a walkable village. The idea being that we didn't want to have vast, long strings of storefronts. Um, so you'll see in all of the. Calculations and all of the data that was provided and done by Rich Warren's office for the comp plan, you'll see very specific measurements of the width of every building in the village. And we were looking at specifically the size of uses and particularly the width. Because when we started to look at other municipalities, for example, East Hampton Village, where you see one store that extends all through different storefronts. Well, that's what we didn't want to have, was one, a village with a single storefront, or a village with a really large retail store. That was not going to be one of your anchor stores. So it was really more aimed at. Your retail element. Of the code. It just ended up being applicable to everything, because we just decided the uses should come in front of the village. For at least a look at before.
So the three thousand square feet was meant to be, even though the code doesn't state it, the ground floor?
It was, it was really, we did really, I, I have to tell you the truth, we really did not consider the second floor uses. Um, other than to say we knew what was legal upstairs, what would be legal on the second floor, and we didn't, we didn't touch any of those. Legalities or any of those permitted or prohibited uses on the second floor.
Right.
We were really more concerned with.
But if we went from three thousand to six thousand, what would prevent somebody from? From connecting three or four. Ground level spaces and going to a six thousand.
There's also a section in there that restricts the width of a, of a space. Um, and if you're going to increase the width of your space, you also need a variance from that section of the village code. There's a, just like there is a limitation on the fifty percent increase, there's a limit on the amount of store width that you can increase as well. So if someone were to try to do that, that, that was the goal, was to try to proget it that from happening by requiring a variance for that.
Yeah, I'm still not getting how we can. Double it. And not create a whole new precedent. That kind of throws that part of the code out the window.
I don't know how that creates precedent. We do have a number of restaurants in the village which are quite large, um.
Well, one question was what? I mean, what in comparison with this fee to other restaurants? I mean, is this, is this enormous now compared to everybody else?
So I, I think the American account probably has upward of a hundred and fifty seats, and, and actually they have capacity to have a lot more. They just don't. Again, they're, they're stuck in a situation, the same thing. They don't have physical space for seating.
Right.
Preexisting seating that they have there. Um, so I don't think it's an enormous space, particularly given that most of it is going to be taken up by mechanicals on the second floor, and you can see there's. I think four dining tables that are out there right now. Um, so it's not, you know, meant to accommodate a huge number of people. It's forty one seats. That will be.
And I don't remember. I was just trying to remember, do you remember any cases? Like this coming before us?
That's a little, it's just sort of the theory of why we would double the three thousand to six thousand.
This does have to go through SECR.
Right.
Um, before the planning board, before this, before this board can act, because they're coordinating. SECR, uh, for the village, so you're not going to be asked to act on this tonight. It's a commercial.
Yeah, my question is kind of theoretical. I don't have any problem with page expanding to the second floor, and it's a, it's a real community asset. It's a great place. Um, and it's not doubling the capacity or anything. I'm just trying to get something that we can put in writing. In the decision that explains why we're doubling.
Provide you an analysis that includes, I think, various restaurants. I can do that for you and provide that.
That would be helpful, just so that it doesn't look like. You know, this is.
We're just increasing, right, we're doubling the size of uses, because honestly, you know, what we talked about a lot during the comp plan process was your anchor stores, your, your hardware store. You know, your smaller grocery store, and we wanted to maintain and have the ability to have those size uses, because if those disappear.
Right.
We want you guys to be able to say, yeah, you can put it on the grocery store.
Right.
That's.
Okay.
You know, that ability.
Could you just explain again to me? How increasing to six thousand is not in excess of fifty percent?
It is, it is an excessive.
But she's going to explain how we can justify that.
Okay.
But it's changing the use of space that's already there. It's in a, it's apartments now.
One single apartment.
One single apartment, yeah.
It's been one single apartment for many, many years.
And you guys maybe like.
And then you'll figure out to.
Forty one is enough.
And you'll figure out just so that we can include it, how backpage fits into this.
Absolutely. We're going to, like I said, we're going to have a discussion about that tomorrow, so I'll work that into the submission that I made to all of you.
Thanks.
And it's moving them from downstairs to that forty one additional seats.
It's actually forty one additional restaurant seats based on a parking calculation. Based on JH code.
Val, do you have any comment?
If anyone has any specific questions for Sal, we can address them with respect to the plans.
No, I don't.
I'd like to hear more findings on how this one set precedent.
Absolutely. I understand that this is, this is a case of first discretion before this board. It's the first time that anyone has asked for this.
And the last time this application was here over two years ago, there was talk about rooftop access.
That is no longer.
Okay.
An issue. There are no variances being requested at this point, other than the size of the use, because we are not adding on anything. The original proposal included an addition onto the second story that went all the way back.
Right.
Um, and that's all been removed. You're looking, being added now is the upper refrigeration on some.
Right. Okay. Alex, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I, I, I appreciated and agreed with everything Tim was saying. Um, and I too am a big fan of page and don't have trouble with, uh, an expansion, but. The doubling of size, uh, is hard to get my mind around.
Great.
So, information in the next session, uh, would be helpful.
Great, thank you. Uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to sixty three Main Street? Uh, please step forward.
Hi.
Hi, great. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Uh, yeah, my name is Lisa Field. Uh, my address is from thirty one Middle Highway in East Hampton. But I am here as property owner of one fourteen Main Street on, in Sag Harbor.
Great. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you.
So I just want to give my support to paint as a. So I just want to give my support to Paige as a fellow small business owner. And just to give you guys some perspective, that um small businesses are struggling now. And people come to San Harbor and say, oh, it's so crowded, there's nowhere to park, it's so busy, all the people. And that's true in July and August, but small businesses operate twelve months out of the year. And I'm putting Paige in that small business category, they're a restaurant that employs local people. And the costs that just keep going up with taxes, insurance, overhead, just the cost of doing business. Business owners do need to get creative, so this is a creative, in my opinion. This is a good use of create, being creative to try and keep Paige here, keep a small business in town. Um and not have the option of just a for sale sign and, you know, having who knows what come in. So I just wanted to give my support on that.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Uh Carrie, is there anyone on Zoom?
No.
No? Tiffany, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I, we're happy to get back to you with the additional information that was requested, um and we'll see you next month. As I said, we do have to appear in front of the planning board.
Right.
Um have secrets sorted out before you make a decision on this anyway.
Is there anybody other comments or questions? Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn fifty-three Main Street to the May twenty-first meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great, thank you very much. Uh next on the agenda is fifty-six Redwood Road. Um could I have a motion to open the public hearing on fifty-six Redwood Road?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Great, could you state your name and address?
Matt Ivan, South Fork Environmental for the applicant.
And your address?
Thirty-eight High Street, San Harbor.
Great, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I did.
Great, thank you.
I saw one of these pretty quickly, uh another social hearing in Redwood, uh the leave requested on effective thirty hundred and twenty. A four, um that's a facility located in a flat yard, waterfront lot. Uh it was situated between the nearest roof portion of the flat yard and the shore. The proposed pool is built by eighteen foot, it's going to be located off the north side of the corner of the house. And that is a result to maintain a seventy-five foot setback from wetlands as required by the city. And. Um of the sixty-seven, resident of the Gavel property within a nine-month, five are developed. Sixty-five are developed by twenty-eight half swimming pools. And of the twenty-eight pools, twenty-seven are also located.
Great. Do any of the board members have any questions?
The same, uh this is Alex, it seems quite reasonable, especially given the, the precedence in, in that particular neighborhood, it's overwhelming. Um there's an attempt to, to protect the wetlands, if I heard it correctly, which is always a good thing. And I think given that it's common in that neighborhood, this seems pretty acceptable to me.
Great, the, the subject system is in the front yard?
Yes.
And I don't see the pool equipment. Do you see the pool equipment?
Yeah, it's gonna be on the west side.
Oh, okay, gotcha. That's fifty feet, everything is okay, so do any other board members have any questions or comments?
No questions or comments, no.
No questions or comments, it's located quite close to the house. It means that, you see.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to fifty-six Redwood Road?
That's just because it's in the, on the water.
Is there anybody? Nobody, okay. Great, uh do you have anything to add before we close? Um I don't think so.
No.
Great, uh could I have a motion to close the public hearing for fifty-six Redwood Road?
Make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Great.
It's Scott, chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Here's a quick question, when you guys at the dais are uh speaking, can you turn your mics off? Cause when you're speaking, I can't hear the presenters.
Uh we can't do that, all the microphones are unfortunately connected.
All right, well, maybe just cover the mics or do something, just cause otherwise I can't, it blocks out the presenter.
Yeah, no, those don't work, it's just these. Um I don't know if we can, well, who knows what we can do. Uh could I have a motion to approve uh the variances for fifty-six Redwood Road?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Okay.
I'll have a decision for the next meeting.
Could I have a motion to direct our attorney to write a decision, favorable decision for the variances for fifty-six Redwood?
I will make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is sixty-one Madison. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for sixty-one Madison Street?
I'll make a motion to open sixty-one.
So we're.
We didn't do anything yet, technically.
We're going, gonna go a little bit out of uh where, and the next one's going to be um number seven, which is five Washington Avenue.
Okay, could I have a motion to open the public hearing for five Washington Avenue?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great, thank you. Could you state your name and address for the record?
The board, council, and Carrie, I'm your assistant, Carrie, and I'm the attorney for the applicant at five Washington Avenue. Um I just like an update in nineteen ten for you, um it's the same plan. Uh but it's in progress, so just.
Great, oh, thank you.
Hi.
Thank you, hi.
We are here tonight for a person that is also a corner lot, and we've had on the agenda tonight. Twice already, and this property is located on the corner of Washington and West Husley. Um it does have an existing house on it, which was subject to a twenty-sixty in the news. Parents, you know, that you issued to construct a new home on the property. The new home has not been built, but it's being under survey, there are the new ones located, which is, was centered in our home lot, the neighborhood home, which is literally on the lot lot itself. What we're here tonight for you to ask is that we can install a swimming pool and they put things to garage um on the front porch, because of the fact that it's a corner lot, those structures are technically in our backyard. They need a variance for that. They also need a variance for their setback performance. The post-swimming pool is located twenty-seven point five feet from Washington Avenue, for thirty-five feet required. And the proposed garage is situated at ninety-five from Washington, for thirty-five is required. Uh that is also the same setback as the existing house. So the garage of the house, the proposed house are at the same setback from Washington. The pool is situated at the first further end, needs less of a bearing, it's centered. They're proposing to screen the pool from Washington, uh with use of the Maryland. And, excuse me. I would note that in driving past this, um this road does have quite a large shoulder. We're not used to having large shoulders inside marker, usually we don't have any shoulders. Here we have a shoulder of about fifteen feet. So um in terms of passersby on Washington Avenue viewing the pool or viewing the garage. They're going to be viewing it an additional fifteen feet away, um as they're driving along that road. So in addition to the twenty-seven foot setback from the property line, we would add that to it in terms of the view that you would have as a passerby on Washington Avenue. We've also tried to be very sensitive to the neighbor. Uh the neighbor asked for screening in the twenty-twenty-three application, uh which we're implementing. Some that you can see on the existing planning plan. Um so it was important to him and to him, him and her, that we centered the pool as well. In other words, they did not want the pool shifted, shifted to their property line. So in terms of the analysis, as we know, benefit versus detriment. And the minimum variance required to afford the applicant the relief that they're requesting. Here, we don't have a choice, we don't really have a rear yard, they have one rear yard lot line. But let's face it, there's no rules to put anything in that rear yard. So no matter where we put anything on this property, it is going to be in a technical front yard. As far as the setback is concerned, this property is only sixty-five feet wide, so we don't have a lot of room to work with. Uh the garage is three hundred ninety-nine square feet, so it's a single car garage, not double. The pool is four hundred and sixty-eight square feet, so we're not talking about substantial structures, we're not talking about building development. We're talking about customery development in the building. I do believe that if they are requesting the minimum variances that they need to get the relief they're looking for. Here, the relief they're looking for is to have the pool situated in a location that is aesthetically pleasing to them. And um provides their neighbor with a little bit of extra coverage from their sideline. And in order to do that, we do need to ask for a variance from that front yard plot line. If this property was what we normally see, we have a two-side yard, so the setback would be ten feet on either side. And we wouldn't be here asking you to relate their ass before the day. I was able to pull several, excuse me, approvals that you've issued in the past. Um seventy-three Harrison, forty-six Terry, twenty-eight Jefferson. The one on Light Husling that Katie mentioned earlier, um I, I think was probably the most similar. Uh but these are corner lots, those are the shorter property on Compton Street, also a corner lot. Where it's very difficult to put a swimming pool, a garage, or pool house without needing some form of building. Due to the fact that we're subjected to the two front yards. The garage is meant not only for the cars, or a car, but for storage, there's no storage on the property. So in order to get things that you would, it's not going to be on the site leave, on the ground. That's the purpose behind the garage. Um so to shield the view of any equipment that's being used outside. We believe that the benefits to the applicant in terms of being afforded the ability to have the swimming pool and garage greatly outweighs any detriment to the community. The detriment to the community is, is a view of those structures from Washington. And as I've explained, because of the the existing screening and the proposed screening, we will not see this pool from Washington Avenue. Um as far as noise and, and those sorts of impacts, I would say that twenty-seven point five feet plus another ten or fifteen feet is going to mean you won't hear the pool from Washington Avenue either. And so I would ask that the board respectfully grant the request of variances. I think that the applicant has done a careful job in designing the property with not a lot to work with in terms of space, it's not asking for any coverage variances, GFA variances. Nothing that would indicate that anything is too large. It's all for the real size.
Great, thank you, the only thing that I noticed was that the pool equipment needs a variance.
Just saw, um, cause I watched you, you know, watched your other hearings and was looking for my own pool equipment. Um I want to apologize, because I was just routine today, so. This was a little last minute for me, um so I'm sorry I didn't catch it earlier, but I see that we need. We need a variant for um the pool equipment in that location.
But, and just, I assume everybody's aware that we're granting a variance on the adjacent property. For roughly about that same amount.
We're not discussing the primary dwelling because we already granted those variances.
These, this house is granted and.
It's not built, but.
They, I don't know if they have a building permit. They have air, they have a building permit? Not yet, but they've got all the approvals. Yeah.
Position. Uh the proposed septic.
From the front, yeah, we're gonna discuss that. Because it's a front yard there.
There you go.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't know, I, I thought it was in the audience.
No, I'm sorry, no, that's okay, can you just start, start again?
I was just saying, Jeff Sharon's here, he's the principal of the property owner. And his suggestion with regard to the pool equipment is, um he'd like to put it inside the garage.
Oh.
Put it in a conforming location in the garage.
Okay, so we would just need that noted on the survey, it removed from the survey to go in there. And then you don't need a variance, it just is a, a relocation.
How wide is the shoulder? How wide is that shoulder on Washington Avenue?
So I.
Approximately?
Yeah, I, so I measured it before I got here, but I realized this is not really a scalable uh survey. So my educated guess in comparing the two was that it was just uh it was between fifteen and seventeen feet.
Uh if you compare it.
Cause I think that's something.
Dimension fifteen, it's about fifteen.
I mean, that's something that we might include in a decision that, that varies this, because it's not going directly from. Do we have a policy on, um, I can't think of the word for it, but when, when applications are split up into stages rather than coming all at once before a board? There's a technical term for that. Somebody comes before the board, they get variances, and then they come back before anything's done, they want more variances. Isn't there a policy on that or anything in the code?
Under environmental review, it's called segmentation, maybe that's.
That's what I meant, segmentation.
But all of these applications that are single-family residential dwellings are type-two actions under SECR, so it doesn't apply to that. Um I would just say that, you know, no, there's no, no specific legal, you know.
It applies to the zoning board?
Yeah, that applies to zoning review for those applications.
Okay.
So just, I guess you weren't here when this was approved, correct?
No, I was.
Oh, you were?
Yeah.
Okay.
My question was, yeah, no, I was, but my question was just the one I asked, and it was answered.
If the shoulder scales at twelve and a half feet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One discrepancy between your project plan and the survey is the fence. On the survey. Is showing plants to the roadside where our planting plan shows plants to the pool side. And the question is.
Well, they can't go by the survey because they're not on the property.
Right.
So the planting plan is correct. So you just need to correct the survey.
Okay, I'm sorry. What was the discrepancy?
On the survey, there are six, did you say cryptid area? They're over the lot line and.
Yes, there's one there and seven here.
Yeah.
So that's the same.
Yeah, they're not on the, on the survey, they're not on the property. Yeah, could, actually, could you state your name and address for the record? That's okay.
Jeff Sharon, nineteen votes in both parts.
Great, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
We tried to correct what you're saying, Jason.
Right.
Oh, I.
Okay.
I understand. Thank you.
If you correct, the, the plant table you're serving, would you also push the fence to the pool side? So it's not exposed to the street?
Absolutely. Yes, the goal for the fence would be to entwine it like they do in vegetation so that it's less visible. Because it's not.
Because your sort of planting land shows chain link fence with your road where it might be nicer like also the interior.
Absolutely.
And the pool equipment instead would go in the garage.
Yeah, I was just, I was speaking with Mr. Sharon. He said he just wants to confirm that we can still fit the one car in the garage with the equipment. So we'll double check on that. And if not, then we're going to move it.
Okay. Do you, does anybody else have any more questions or comments?
I'd like those. Your proposed pool.
Yes.
Is forty seven point five.
Yes.
And it should, and it should be what?
Thirty five.
And on the contralateral side.
Twenty one point four five from the.
Yeah, and that's, that's aside.
That's.
Why, why would you not move the pool over?
The, during the hearing that they had on the house, the neighbor was concerned about. The proximity of their lot line. So the goal was to.
No, I know.
Keep the pool as far away from as possible and without approaching on the road to the degree that a variance would not be warranted. Though, and also we wanted to center it because if you move the pool over. It is really going to look awkward and it's.
Well, I mean, we're, we're moved, we're moving pools before. Not centered and to diminish your variance.
Right, I understand. I would just, my argument would be that the benefit in terms of. Being this aesthetically centered outweighs the detriment.
Well, my argument is it should be consistent. That you should put it in a more ideal position. That's, that's my argument. To diminish your variance.
I think if we were to grant the variance in a decision, if we acknowledge the, the twelve, ten or twelve foot. Difference in the. The side area along, along Washington Avenue, that that would differentiate it from almost. Any other application I can think of that would be have to come before us. There might be some mitigating. Circumstance. The other, you know, most of the time these setbacks are right from the street. This is an open so, I'm just making that.
The other thing is that I know that we've granted variances for conditions like this with this. General amount of variance, this twenty seven point five feet.
Yes.
I mean, if we look at Jefferson Street, that was, well, that was thirty four, but.
Right.
I know that we've branded things in this general area.
Well, the one we just questioned on Henry Street was only eighteen feet, so.
Yeah, we did one on a union. Just before, one twelve union.
One twelve.
That's the, the first one we did.
Twelve Union?
You mean Henry Street.
Well, we're asking them to move that pool. They're coming back to us.
You understand that?
Yeah. But they don't have this, my, my point would be they don't have this area between.
Okay.
Their street and this.
Eighteen.
Which you may not agree with that, but to me it's a mitigating factor.
Alex, do you? Oh, sorry, Jeff.
In addition to. Twenty seven, twenty five feet, we have a shoulder of roughly twelve.
That's the point I made.
And a half feet, which then increases us to almost forty feet from the edge of pavement. I mean, that's the distinction.
Exactly. That's, that was my point. So the variance request for twenty Henry. They're situating there with eighteen feet from the lot line and I didn't see, I mean, it didn't show on the survey. I didn't see a shoulder on that.
If there is, it's a footer, so.
But this is a much larger lot.
No, it's smaller.
Then. Alex, do you have any comments? Before we go to the.
Not, not really, other than the setbacks, the variances requests are a little bigger than I would like, but. But I'm understanding a little bit better. What the nature of the request, so I'm, I'm, I'm okay for now.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to address five Washington Avenue? Anyone on Zoom, Gary?
No.
No. So I guess the, the question is, do you want us to adjourn this so you can check out things?
Hello, can you hear me? I have a question.
Okay.
Name?
Yes, my name is Michael Reese. I, I reside at nine Washington Avenue.
Great. Can you raise your right hand?
Sure.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, you may proceed.
Okay, as far as there being a shoulder on that street, there's no shoulder. I mean, it goes directly from the street into the yard. So I don't see where you're coming up with an additional seventeen feet of shoulder.
It's because, can you see the, the screen? The survey on the screen?
No, I don't, I can't see the survey. I can't see anything. I wasn't able to get in on the Zoom for some reason. I'm listening in over the phone.
Okay, so the reason that it seems odd to you, it's because between the pavement. And the actual property line, there's actually twelve feet. The property line is not at the pa, where the pavement meets the lawn. It's actually about twelve to fifteen feet toward, away from the, the pavement. So there is actually a big wide space of land that's not owned by the applicant. Between their property line and the street. It looks like it's all their property, but it's not.
And this is Denise Sharon speaking. It, it's often confusing to people because many people. Put their grass and their driveway in the right way because it just makes sense to build up to the road. So a lot of people, when you're driving past people's houses, it may look like their grass goes right up to the pavement. But in truth, part of their grass is actually owned by the village. It's actually the, the shoulders. Although they could use it if they wanted to. They just haven't expanded their shoulders very often.
Does that answer your question?
No, I know exactly where the property lines are, but there's no parking on that street whatsoever. If you park there, you're parking in the middle of the street.
Right, but all we're saying is that property line is not at the street line. It's twelve to fifteen feet away from the street. That's the property line.
Okay, and.
So you could theoretically park on that grass and you would be parking on village property. It's not.
Well, you can't park on, yeah, no, you can't park on the grass because the, it's, it's a slope there. It's a hill.
Yes, yes, but I'm just saying that it's not the, the applicant's, it's not the applicant's property. It's the village's property. So that's, that's what we're referring to by this. This space between the property line and the, and the street line. It would be, you'd understand it if you could see the, the survey. You could come into the village office and see it.
Okay, I thought I was supposed to get one in the mail or, or something like that. But al- also, I can't see where the, where the garage and the pool are, are going to be located. In, in what.
Yeah, you'll have to come into the village office to look at the survey.
Well, you can't tell me where, if the garage is going to be up against my property line or the pool or which?
I don't, which property are you?
Nine.
That, are you?
Nine Washington Avenue?
So the garage.
Yes.
It's the garage and then the pool.
It goes, yes, goes garage, pool, house towards Lighthouse Lane. So if you're, are you, you're on Washington, correct? So adjacent to your, your property would be the garage. Not the pool. There'd be a garage between you and the pool.
And it's setback ten feet from his rear property line, which is legal to code.
You really understand it better if you come in to look at the survey. This is going to be adjourned, correct? So you could have an opportunity to come into the village, look at, uh, village office, look at the survey. And then if you want to make comments at the. Twenty first May meeting, you could do that after you've been able to review the survey.
Or please feel free to call. I'm happy to email you anything. So, if, if, you know, if you watch the, my name's Denise Sharn at the Adam Miller Group and I'd be happy to provide you with whatever you need.
Um, my name's, this, this is Jeff Sharon. How, how you doing, Mikai? And, and I, I tried to stop by a few times the last few weeks. But I guess we weren't able to connect and I'm happy to call you and answer any questions or. Again, try to connect next time, next time you're around.
Okay, you can call me. You've called me before, Jeff. You can call me. You have, you have my number.
Um, would you mind giving it to me again?
Sure.
You have the. Yep, it's seven three two.
Three one zero.
One eight seven.
Right, three one zero, one eight seven zero.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out.
Great, that would, if you guys can review the plan together to answer whatever questions, that would be great. So do any of the board members, do you have any others, any other comments?
No, that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else, Gary? Okay, do any board members have any more questions?
No.
Denise, do you have anything else? So it's really just straightening out the, the vegetation, the pool fence, the pool equipment. I think that was it. And talk to the neighbor. That was great.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn? Where are we? Five Washington Street to the May twenty first meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Now where are we going?
Sixty one Madison.
Okay. Sixty one Madison Street. Great, could I have a motion to open the public hearing for sixty one Madison Street?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
Yeah. Great.
Thank you. Can you stick your name and address for the record?
Sure, Anthony Urban Boss, eighty Union Street.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you.
How many, Denise?
Uh, yes. Okay, so I am representing the homeowner, Allison Whitmore at sixty one, not three. So two things to start off about this property that are important to note. One is that this is a corner lot, so it impacts how the. Side yards and rear yards are declined. The second thing is that this, the existing house on the property is tiny. And to give you an example, just to give you a reference of how tiny this house is. The house is sixteen by thirty five. This room we're in now is seventeen by forty five. So the house could actually literally fit inside this room with room despair. It's seven hundred ninety six square feet. I know, excuse me, it's six hundred ninety six square feet. Which is actually a hundred and four square feet smaller than the minimum allowed by code in South Harbor Village. So really this project is all about getting some more, some additional. Living space in the house while still keeping it a, a small conflict structure. So we're proposing to add a total of five hundred square feet to the house for me enough. Even with this addition, it will still be, well, it will still be under twelve hundred square feet. Still, still one of the smallest houses in the village. It will also be less than half what would be built here at this, for GFA requirements if this was new structure. You would be allowed twenty five hundred square feet if GFA, if this was a new structure. It will be, as I mentioned, one thousand one hundred ninety six square feet. We're proposing two additions to the house, one coming out to the south towards Union Street. And one which is basically, I don't know if you've had a chance to walk the property yet, but there's a little. I don't know if you'd call it a big shed or a small garage to the east of the, of the main house. And basically it would be just, the proposed addition would be filling up, rear addition would be filling up. That space between the existing house and the, the existing shed. And the existing shed, which is not, not informing would be demolished. So that adds some additional lots of which. We were able to just sort of very generally speak about this before the ARV in, back in December. And I basically had two suggestions about how to expand this house. One was to go up and one was to go out. Going up would have triggered, so would, would not have required any lot coverage variances. But it would have required a more substantial pyramid variance, what we're asking for. Going up, but for the ARV going up is basically a nonstarter. They said basically under no certain, certain turns, they want any addition to be taller than what is there now. So we were very, very terrible to keep those additions lower than the one story and lower than the existing rich height of the house. Yeah, so it's basically the variances that we're asking for is the expansion of the footprint to, from. Six hundred ninety two square feet to one thousand one hundred ninety six square feet. The protrusion into the sky plate of forty three cubic feet, which is de minimis. And the rear yard setback is ten point seven feet or thirty feet, which require, but this is getting back to this being as. A quarter lot, so we don't really have, we don't have a side yard. This was a normal interior lot with a side yard under four tenths roll. We would, would have ten feet there and we wouldn't need a, we wouldn't need that variance at all. And then the, as I mentioned, the lot coverage here, slight increases in building and total lot coverages. Which once again, we could have avoided those if we went up, but the ARV greatly preferred this as, as keeping this to one story. So that's basically it.
Where's the ten point seven rear yard?
Where, where are you considering your rear yard? That was enough here.
So, I've been told, you know, and I think this has been a bit of an ongoing discussion, is where rear yards and side yards are are declined. I think we've been told here that we're, we basically, we don't have a side yard, we have the rear, rear yards. So this is where that ten point seven is here, on the uh north side of the property. One thing I know that this is obviously s- set well in from the existing footprint of the house, which is, I think, uh, coming up to the.
Right, so they're considering the rear yard from that um, the north property line down, down to the, in the east wet. So there are two rear yards, there's one this way and there's one this way.
There's just nothing labeled ten point seven, but I guess it's the eleven.
There should be some numbers on the survey.
I just, I was looking for the ten point seven, I'll take the eleven point three.
Eleven point three is.
Close enough.
What it is, it's, it's more than the law's.
Yes, yes.
Um, I'm assuming you have to put in a new septic system?
Yes, we do.
And that will go, it's sort of in a front yard somewhere?
No swimming pool will be somewhere in the front yard. One thing I would add here is that something that previous owners of this property have done to get more space is to fill up a very tiny basement. With all sorts of illegal stuff going on there that I don't even wanna mention, uh, it's kind of like a rabbit Warren down there. So one thing that we're going to be doing is digging out that basement, so it's nice and proper, they're eager as well, so any habitable space down there will be uh, will be legal. And covered by the new septic system for veteran count, we have to hold three veterans.
Can you post the uh survey up on the screen so we can see that?
I'll also show you, I don't know if you can see this out, but this is a um side plant, which shows the, the color of it.
Uh, any board members have any questions?
No.
Anthony, does the basement improvement involve lifting?
Um, we're probably gonna have to do, because it's so close to the property line, we'll probably have to be, um, at least I certainly that north wall will have to be under spent rather than a a houselet.
I mean, I ask because it's point eight feet of lot.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I say, I, it's unlikely we'll be able to just on a practical level, do a houselet, it'll have to be dug out section by section. Which, which we've done in similar uh situations there without impacting the uh the neighbors.
But the ele- the first floor elevation is not going to change.
No, okay, first floor elevation stays exactly the same, ridge height relative to existing grade stays exactly the same. And there'll probably be uh minimal changes to the uh grading around the property.
And you can demonstrate no disturbance to the neighbor's hedge. At point eight, which is nine inches away from their, their property line.
I mean. Can I say that on, on neighbor? Yes, I mean, while we're into, do, do our, you know, we'll, we'll. The intent is not to intrude on the neighbor, either neighboring properties at all. Um, I think it's something that we'll have to have a discussion with the contractor and the building department when the time comes to make sure everything, you know, is is properly.
Have you have gotten anything from that neighbor?
Uh, no, I haven't, I think it was here, but um.
Carrie, did we get any feedback from anybody? Uh, do you have anything else to add, Anthony?
Is there any question, other questions, if any neighbors have any questions, I'm, I'm here.
So uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to sixty one Madison Street? Great. Hi, could you just state your name and address for the record?
Caitlin Diebold, thirty seven Union Street.
Okay, and.
What's your last name? D I E B O L D, and it's C A I T L I N.
So you're adjacent to the property?
Yeah.
Okay, could you ra- raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you, you may proceed.
Uh, so we actually just got them mailing, and so I haven't seen any plans or anything, but when I looked at. The ten or nine foot from the backyard of my already fairly small property. I was concerned, so that's why I'm here, I really don't, other than it seems like that's a lot of a variance. I get, I understand the house is small, I totally, it is a small house. We did a huge renovation without extending the house at all. But the house was that size when they bought it, and so, and the property is small, so it just looks, the numbers look aggressive to me. And when I'm standing at my grill an hour ago, thinking I'm gonna see, give me a house.
Are they here?
Right, in front of my face.
Um.
Are you on Union or, are you on Union or Madison?
We're on Union and Kirk.
So. It's actually gonna be, because we're removing the garage, it's gonna actually be further away from you than the existing garage. Here, there's you.
Yep.
Right? And this is the back line of the addition. That ten point seven is from here to here.
And where's the property line?
The property line is here.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I said, I didn't know anything going on, so I was.
If you look at the, if you look at the notice, it sounds more dramatic than it is, because you're really. Any, anybody would say this is the rear yard and this is the side yard, because the way the village defines it, this is, they call this the rear yard too. So that's where that ten point seven or eleven uh is is coming from, but you know, you're, you're. The closest point here is gonna be about one eight.
Which is where the garage is.
Further.
Yeah, and there's no swimming pool here either too, so, uh, just gonna do a little patio out here, but that's it.
Thank you.
Great, does that answer your question?
I think so.
Great, okay, thank you very much. Uh, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to sixty one Madison Street? Anybody on Zoom? Any answer, uh, any other comments or questions from the board?
No.
Do people seem okay with this?
Okay.
Everybody's feeling, Alex?
Actually, I have a nice one other quick question.
Sure.
As far as.
If you just come forward.
As far as.
Can you get a speak into the mic that's over you so it gets on our public record? Thank you.
As far as the construction goes, we do have our house rented for the summer. And I, I would just wonder, when do we sort of find out when construction would. I just would feel awful if I rented the house to someone and then it was an entire summer of construction.
I don't think, just logistically speaking, I don't think we're gonna be able to get started formally every day, because we still gotta do the ARB, which will be. I don't think I'm even gonna be ready for ARB by May, so might not even be June if we get through.
Thank you, uh, I, we didn't get any from Alex.
Yeah, sorry, I was unmuted, that's sorry. Um, I was just saying that generally I'm comfortable, um, I just, maybe, maybe the applicant could repeat the justification. I know it's a very small lot, and I know the house is kind of tiny to begin with, but they are looking to go over the lot. Coverage uh to limits as well as the um. As the proposed building coverage limits uh by a, by a bit. So what, just remind me what the justification is there?
But the um justification there was, uh, you know, we had two options, one was to go up and one was to go out. And going up, you know, we could have avoided the lock up, both lock coverage and the building uh coverage, but that just wasn't really. Uh, you know, the ARB hated that idea, and I kind of agree with them, I think it was a little silly to go up and it would have triggered a uh. Uh, it would have triggered pyramid variances, so it was, you know. We'd be coming here, if we weren't asking for lock coverage, we'd be asking for uh much more substantial pyramid variance than what we're asking for. And um, you know, once again, if this was um, you know, a, a new house, we could build a two-story, twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house on the property theoretically. Um, without needing a lot coverage variance, but this is, you know, the nature of this house is a little bit, um. It, it, it's, it's an existing house, and then, you know, this is really the best way to add on to it, still be sensitive to its uh scale and, and character.
Uh, the other thing is that you're asking for twenty-two point thirty-six, where twenty percent is required for building coverage. And twenty-five point seven where twenty-five percent is required, or, or allowed, I'm sorry. Uh, so they're not huge numbers of uh violation.
Right, I mean, for the total lock coverage, I mean, we're going up by forty-two square feet. It's not, you know, it's not like that. Um, and I'm not sure what the percentage of that is, uh, but it's, 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 you know, less than one percent.
Does that uh answer your questions, Alex?
Yes, it does, I feel uh uh much more comfortable, thank you very much.
Great, um, so.
I have a question for Liz. Liz, do you need anything particular from us in terms of expanding a, a non-conforming structure beyond the fifty percent? Or is there enough, do you have enough to write a decision that justifies that?
Why can we do this section? You can tell me. Three hundred twelve point six.
I mean, can we justify just on the basis that it's a very small house to begin with and not, not in keeping with the modern lifestyles, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, you, you know, and that's when they, that this law first came before the bill, which had, had made it a point to say that there could be instances where they're really small houses. That might come up, you know, even a small addition to a really small house might trigger that.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Um, I don't think that was the intended.
No, I don't think so either, I agree.
You have to find that the parking is met, which you could make a finding that the parking is met.
It is, yeah.
That there shall be no change of nature.
Yeah, okay.
Not according to your structure, which I believe is the case.
Good.
And that the lock coverage intensity should not be greater than what would have been permitted at most restricted.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you.
I mean, the other thing is, it's not going to become a massive house, it's still gonna be a relatively small house.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's.
Yes.
I think it's the smallest project, tightest total size that I've done with the village.
Um, do you have anything else to add? That's okay, and so, could I have a motion to close the public hearing for? Sixty one Madison Street?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, um, could I have a motion to approve the variances for sixty one Madison Street? And, and well.
Instruct our attorney to.
And instruct our attorneys to draft a decision favorable for sixty one Madison Streets.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Now, where are we going? Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for two hundred three Madison Street? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Cindy, my name's Monica Alco, my phone is Mary. Um, and I thought it was two three Madison Street, which is the old carving shop, uh, second hand.
Great, and are you an attorney?
No, I'm the owner.
Great, could you raise your right hand?
I'm sure.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you.
So I'm here to seek your um permission, approval, to rebuild and restore uh two or three Madison Streets to its original state. This means build a part of, rebuilding part of that building, a pre-existing second floor that was unfortunately lost. During the riots, sometimes in nineteen fifties. And I have a couple pictures, uh, a map and um some, you know, paperwork you can review. Uh, to see that there was a buyer and it um was a second floor. Um, I don't think, you might have a picture there with you, do you have this picture in your file?
Uh, no.
May I approach the bench?
Uh, Denise, are you? So Denise, can you state your name and address for the record?
Denise Sharn, attorney for the applicant, for six one Main Street, for Chant, New York, yeah.
Great, thanks.
First hearing of images of the damage. And all the support beings. We, this building, they're charred still. It must have been, I guess.
Anthony, while you're, while we're waiting, can you also state your name and address for the record?
Sure, Anthony Urban Ross, sixty eight Union Street.
Great, could you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I'm also handing in a picture, um, what we, what the original structure was. It was a gas station, it was actually Reed Brothers, uh, it was a little. Del test in there, um, you'll see, um, there's corner, like a corner entrance. And um, somebody's standing out front with their apron on. Um, but you'll see on the street, there's two gas station pumps, and it looks like there's also a still sort of dump for oil. Um, so what I did is, I took a current picture of the building. And the picture that I found through um, this Markowski, he used to work for uh Set Harbor, a savings bank. And he saved all the pictures that the bank had targeted with. So um, this from uh anywhere from nineteen twenty to nineteen forty-five, I'm not sure. But that's what is said on the back of the picture. So what I did is I overlapped them, just for you to see what looks now versus what would look restored completely the way it's supposed to be. Which, you know.
Okay.
Um, wanna just go through the five tests here. So the, the subject property is the original site of the historic Madison Market. Um, an early twentieth century two-story general store attached to a nineteenth-century one-and-a-half-story residence. A buyer in the nineteen fifties, which we've seen the evidence for there, uh, destroyed the second uh floor of the general store. The remaining, major of the building is, is fairly intact, with the, the residence being converted into two apartments. And the first floor, the remaining first floor of the store retaining its retail function. Um, the applicant seeks to um reconstruct the second floor of the retail store, for which there is ample documentary evidence. Which affects both dimensions and architectural appearance. Um, this reconstruction will return the corner of Madison and Jermaine to its historic early twentieth century character. Um, the benefit sought by this um applicant is to rehabilitate an existing non-con, non-conforming structure in Houston area. With a current valid CEO for two rental apartments and retail store space. The applicant wishes to keep these uses, uh, re, reorganizing and updating the apartments. And adding second floor uh retail office and retail storage space to the uh, to the retail space. Um, see, uh, at eight thousand six hundred sixty cubic feet, uh, the request of pyramid variance should be considered. Uh, substantial comparison to other um pyramid variances granted by the ZBA in the R twenty district. Um, however, and this is important, there are really two major mitigating factors. Uh, one noted as, as below, this um proposed work uh conforms exactly to a historically attested second floor. Um, secondly, the proposed pyramid violation protrudes solely towards the uh neighboring streets. Um, namely Madison and Jermaine, and it does not in of itself impact either, directly impact either neighboring properties. Uh, my dad, besides the, the um, the pyramid relief, mo- most of the other significant variances were, were um asking for here. Fall somewhat of that category, the GFA and the um second floor setback uh as well. Um, as noted in ANC, the proposed work re- restores the property to its historic scale and appearance. The apartments and retail store will be provided with off-street parking, and the existing sanitary system will be replaced with an IA, IA compliant one. Um, the property has been owned by the uh, by the current applicant, well now it's probably in the first six months, when was it, August?
August.
Yeah, and uh, she hasn't undertaken any work of requiring uh approval from this board or any other board. So this are the uh, it's the five tests.
Great.
Has this been before the planning board or a walk-on at the ARB?
We're just gonna.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so what are you doing about secret?
We're gonna um, gonna work on, on that for the uh, planning board, yeah.
Okay.
So, ARB, I. So ARB, I wanted to go for this, um, discussion item in May, we're ahead of, uh, scheduling conflict, we're gonna go to do ARB, um, in May as a discussion item.
Okay, so you're gonna present this to the planning board for the planning board to do secret, so where you're headed?
Or are you gonna ask this board to do so? What are you doing? Like, this requires, obviously, if you're increasing retail, it probably requires site plan. Which means that the planning board will undertake secret review for probably an unlisted action, I'm not sure. Uh, depending on what the code states, um, and if you want a coordinated review, because I'll find this one, then you'll probably want to have to.
So just everybody understands, we can't do anything with this project because there, there isn't secret, we haven't been through.
So I have a lot of questions, but we'll put them off to a real community.
Well, we can ask questions, but we're not going to act on it, we can't consider it, we can't approve it and act on it.
Yeah, we understand that you can't, um, approve or would like any questions.
Right, so, well, this is a, this is an R twenty residential zone. Um, with a pre-existing use but has not been used intensely as retail in fifty or seventy-five years. That duck decoy place that was there, no one ever went in or out of there. So it's quite a change to that neighborhood to have a, a, what you are describing as a retail store. That people will park, go in the store, buy something, shop. Will that be, my, so my question is, will the planning board take that into account? Because.
So.
To the layperson, the definition of what a planning board does is look at changes to neighborhoods. Not what we do is look at how does that affect the code?
Well, you.
It seems like it should be, okay, good.
You also have to consider the impact neighboring properties when you're granting variances, so that is something that this board has to consider.
Right.
And you also, I think, have to determine whether it would be an increase in the degree of non-conformity.
Hmm, yeah.
Uh, which is something significant that.
So the planning board will only take secret into account, they won't. I mean, in most communities, the planning board has a lot to do with this kind of question, so they will, they won't be limited to just a secret consideration.
It's gonna have to go, no, they're gonna have to go before the planning board.
They just can solve you from doing yourself, that's what I was saying.
No, but I'm, I'm, no, I know, but I'm just wondering if the planning board will step up and not just deal with secret environmental issues, but also deal with wider, larger community issues.
Well, planning board deals with an enumerated set of. Yeah, planning board deals with an enumerated set of factors in the code and in New York State Village Law, which are more like access, parking, drainage. Um, circulation on the site, you know, more physical characteristics of a, of a site plan for retail use.
Okay, so right now we're just.
Yes, may I say something?
Of course, sorry.
So, um, today, um, I received a, um, a, um, a call from, um, I mean, a letter. From the Office of Pollution Control, no further action. And all I'm really missing right now from the Health Department's, from view, um, it's the secret. And, uh, the water, uh, the, the water, uh, this wastewater division, except it coming at team, my, my project is approvable. So just something to consider as well.
Do you want to define what type of retail use you might have there and, and even have it being? Let me finish my question and even have it included in our decision so that the retail use is somewhat limited.
It would have to be included in the decision.
So.
Frankly, Liz, can?
What does?
The, the retail use is gonna have to be included in the decision, correct?
Well, the variances they're asking for.
It's a use variance, right, yes.
Right, yes.
We need to know the use.
Okay, so for past twenty years, I, I took over the merch gallery, Monica to gallery on ninety-five Main Street. Uh, and I've been there for a very long time and, um, unfortunately, my, um, my landlord. But I'm the plate rush, Mr. Krupinski, a new group bought my building. And, um, I. I tried to buy the building, but of course, somebody got to it first and, uh, they sold it to them. And, and it was expensive and then finally I've been eyeing this, you know, uh, Madison Street as well. And it was less expensive, so I decided that it's got two big windows, so I can move my gallery. Eventually, when they kicked me out and they want for a hundred thousand dollars for summer, um, to move to Madison Street, basically. And, um, still have brick and mortar, in order for you to be a legitimate gallery, you have to have a brick and mortar. And it's very close to the village.
Right, so it would be an art gallery?
It would be a very private art gallery.
Okay, okay, that, that was my question, yeah, thank you.
Yes, and I do.
Well, and, and Liz, this isn't a use variance.
It's not a use variance, no, a use variance, this is, this is an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use, which is different than a use variance. A use variance is, if there was never any retail here before, uh, then, and they asked for it and it was not permitted.
Right. Right. Right.
Then it's a use.
I'm sorry, let me see.
No, but it's, but it's a hundred years, it's a hundred years or seventy-five years since it was anything like this.
But I would think that the use is something that's very important to know to some degree, because then it's the intensification of traffic.
Exactly.
That's why I said it's somewhat of a use.
You know, so doesn't impact secret, because you measure one fifty two Hampton, they get actually additional negative declaration.
Right.
Where they specify the same traffic impacts, um, for secret for the uses he was proposing that they allow. Only certain uses that were the same, that are equivalent to the traffic and export as well. So that was actually a change from one non-conforming use to another, a little different, but it can impact secret, and it's certainly considered by.
The other thing that you might wanna consider is not is additional uses that you might wanna have be approved. Because if you need to rent the space out, you would have to just come back here again, or if somebody didn't wanna do an art gallery.
I just want it to be art gallery. So was that?
No, this is totally up to you, I'm just making a suggestion that if you, if we grant it for an art gallery, it's then only art galleries and other things that are in that category.
They would technically have to come back.
Yeah, well, even an art gallery is a significant, art galleries have openings.
No, 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 I'm not saying, I'm just saying.
Twenty-five, thirty people come, they have to park.
But I'm just saying that if you can't make it as an art gallery and they need to rent it out to become a hardware store, they're gonna have to come back.
I, I've been a private dealer for like, I, I'm actually always closed and I have like one person, they call me, they come in for private viewing, I don't do, I do not like openings, I'm against them actually. Um, and things like that, so.
But if it's an art gallery, then it doesn't mean you're always going to be the owner of the art gallery, you might sell it in a year. And then somebody else.
I don't know, that's why, I'm sorry, but that's why this board, if you, if you had an agreement with the property or the property, uh, true covenant.
Covenant.
We run the land and we restrict the use of it to what the board does.
Right, right.
And I've been around for twenty years already, I just wanna continue my business because I worked very hard on the building and we stored everything inside.
Well, we're gonna take this up again, anyway, so we won't be laborate tonight.
But, uh, covenant will help control unwanted, undesirable use.
I mean.
I do have support of my neighbors as well.
I think it would be good, though, to give a little bit of feedback, I mean, this is an enormous.
Yes.
Yeah, I have, I have real problems with it.
Right, because.
So middle residential neighborhood is tremendous amount of traffic there already, and it's an incredible intensification to what the people that live around there are used to. Nobody's walked in that building to buy a duck decoy in twenty-five or fifty years, no one goes in and out of there ever.
So the other thing, though, is that we would have to grant them a variance for GFA.
I accept.
Because, and we've never done that before. And there has to be a very good reason for us to all of a sudden grant a variance for GFA. Cause then we begin, we set a precedent. We, not that we can't grant a variance, but we never have. It's a lot of, um, pyramid violation, I understand it's mostly on the street. So it's also weighing, um, restoring something to what it was and, and the impact of the, you know, the mass of it.
I, I think that's, that's kind of critical in terms of.
This was a different village seventy-five years ago, there was a store like this on every corner, as Dennis Downs always reminds us.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's, in terms of precedence, what, what precedence granting this would, would send, which is, uh, said it's important because. This is, you know, as we've noted, it's, 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 it's reconstructing something that we know was al- already there. And I'm not talking about the intensification of use, I'm just talking about purely about the architecture here. We know it's, 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 um, something that was already there, uh, we know how big it was, we know what it looked like, right? Um, the other, other thing is that, um. You, because, so somebody can't come to you and say they wanna add an eight thousand square foot addition to the back of their house, right? And use this as a precedence because it's, this is a, a unique circumstance.
Well, it's not that unique, though, because there are lots of places in the village where there were these things that aren't there anymore, that then somebody can come in and say, well, there used to be a ten thousand square foot.
Yeah, okay.
barn here and we wanna rebuild it.
I'm glad you asked that, a cou- a couple of little interesting things here, the previous project I was on sixty-one Madison Street, right? There used to be a three-story house on that property, all right? Rebuilding a three-story house isn't an option because the new house there is a contributing building, so we couldn't tear that down and rebuild that, that three-story house. In, in, there are a lot of, as I've noted in every public hearing, anyone who will listen to me at the Board of Justices, there used to be a lot more three-story buildings, two and three-story buildings in the village bus- business district, right? Than there are now. But that's the village business, business district, it's not the R twenty district. So this is really a kind of unique case in the, uh, architecturally, it's a unique case in the, um, R twenty district. Uh, as far as that amount of, of, the amount of, um, GFA and pyramid variance we would be asking for. Also, here, uh, GFA was designed to keep the historic parrot, uh, keeping houses small. In this case, this was a big structure, which, uh, yeah, we'll, 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 the, the evidence. Um, after that fire in nineteen fifty, in the nineteen fifty, nothing else was added to the house since then, so it sounds, it only got smaller since the historic period.
Other than, other than that two-story addition, the second story addition that you're doing.
Correct.
Is there anything, you're not changing the rear structure?
No, we're adding a little side porch off the rear, which doesn't, I don't.
Are you moving some dormers?
Yeah, it's a little lighter.
You're not adding on.
Not adding bulk.
To any of the other parts of the.
And the two apartment, the areas of the two apartments are, they're staying about the same size, we're just kind of redistributing them, making one smaller and one bigger.
Um, Alex, do you have any questions?
No, sorry, Scott, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm in transit, so I'm just listening, but it's very hard to catch attention, so I don't really have any questions.
Okay, great, you, you, any of the board members have any more questions?
It's, uh.
Quite a number of variances, a lot of work that has to be brought before.
But it's good to give them a little bit of feedback.
Yeah.
It's a lot. I guess that's what you're hearing. But, and we totally understand it's reconstructing something that was there, but it's a lot. Is there anyone from the public in the audience? Can you speak to two oh three Madison Street? Please come forward.
Yeah, my name is Ed Bowden.
Could you just, uh, while you're under the microphone, state your name and address?
Ed Bowden, under the, I'm a contractor, local contractor, and the money that property.
Could you, can you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Great.
So, um, I understand neighbors nearby are favorable of what? Um, you use, that's what I sort of enjoy, I just, basically, the neighbors. They're not happy with what it looks like, they're happy that we're involved, or Monica is involved, uh. Monica is a good friend of mine and I'm giving her advice because she's, she's, uh. Working to do this, to move her gallery there and I'm a contractor, so I have some advice for her. Sometimes she takes it, sometimes she doesn't. Um, but anyway, so, um, I think it's important that, uh, people understand that the neighbors would like the property to look better. And it's in the historic district, I believe, and we wanna restore it to what it looks like. Uh, hopefully to get the best use for it. Um, uh, it'd be nice if it's restored to what it looked like years ago.
Great, thank, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom, Carrie?
Yeah.
Um, do you guys have anything else to add?
Could I just, Denise Sharon, Attorney for the applicant, just wanted to make just a few minor clarifications. Uh, one, I don't know that we're going to need a GFA variance, um, I was retained on this very recently, yesterday. So, so I am gonna talk to the building inspector, GFA variance is, if you read that section of the code, apply to single family residences.
So I was talking to Liz about this earlier and there are some weird conditions in there.
You need to meet with the building inspector, okay?
Because you may or may not have to comply with that GFA.
Kind of, so it's, you know, about, for, for, yeah, yeah.
So we do understand that that's sort of unknown, but.
Up in the air right now, um, I also just wanted to clarify, and I know this was said, that this is a, um. We, we are willing to covenant to use and this is an appointment-only gallery, so, um, and that's how it's operated in the village. So there's some evidence of that, you don't just have to take our word for it, um, there is some evidence of that, but we would also covenant to that as well. Uh, this is where Monica wants to live and, and have her business, um, for the foreseeable future. Uh, so those were really the two clarifications I wanted to make and also just point out that on the record, that I handed up two letters from immediately versus.
Yes, so just two oh seven Madison and one twenty-eight Jermaine.
Great, thank you.
And I believe there is a gallery, Caddy Corner Shop.
Yes, well.
Um, so, that's exactly the same, so, I'm like.
A designer's office.
Most of the time when I'm on Main Street, because my gallery, I just sit in the back and work out of my computer really, so I'm never really very private. But I just need an order for me to be legitimate gallery, I need to quickly have a order, the left word.
I think it's good that Denise was retained because there's so many legal issues that need sorted out.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's a complicated property, it's not something we can't get through, um, and we will certainly do that.
Yes. Yes. So you're gonna then start the process of secret during the site plan and application with the planning department?
I'm actually wanting to meet with the building inspector, determine whether we need to be at planning board, I've got sections today. To be in there, uh, because they talk about expanding uses, meaning site plan, but that. They reference it only with respect to buildings of one three thousand square feet. So, uh, I just wanna make sure that if we use a leading site plan, and if we do, then we'd be a site plan and secret would be done by a planning board.
Right.
Pretty sure they would want the agency.
Right, right, okay, great. Uh, any other questions or comments from the board?
I just make one comment, originally, this was probably a single-family residence.
Yeah, uh, the, the little, the little nineteen century, you can even see the window where it was.
Yeah, that's off, I'll just say that. So we're drawing the point that this is the original. To sort of justify the gallery, but really, the original is a single-family R twenty residence with no commercial stuff going on, probably.
Well, we deserve to know the second story was there, but.
I have a, I have a C O from nineteen seventy-nine that says it has apartments and.
Yeah, yeah, that's not what I meant, but, but that's fine, yeah.
And honestly, it's not about the use for us historically, it was really, the point was that historically.
No, but the point was made that it looked like this in nineteen fifty, so we should go back to that, but what about eighteen fifty? I mean, where do you draw the point that this is how, what we wanna recreate in terms of history? It's just a point I wanted to make, we won't go over it now. Thank you.
Which is sort of arbitrary, and that's what, um, ARG, his sort of preservation boards are always trying to figure out. What points you, um, go back to.
Right, yes.
So, with that, unless you have anything else to add, we'll adjourn this?
That, um, we'll actually send a letter to let you know that we're ready to come back, so you're not guessing.
Can you come back with ARB commentary?
Yes, absolutely, so that's our next.
Yeah, we'll be at the, at the May meeting as a discussion item for ARB.
Thank you, great.
We'll definitely provide their feedback.
Thank you.
Very good, uh, could I have a motion to adjourn two oh three Madison Street to the, well?
I think you adjourn it, uh, until you get back from the applicant.
Can we adjourn it indefinitely, or do we have to adjourn it to the next meeting and then adjourn it again?
Yeah, I would just keep it on the calendar.
Okay, let's adjourn it to the twenty, uh, May twenty-first meeting, could have the motion.
Knowing that we'll adjourn it again.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you very much, thank you Peter. Uh, decisions? Oh, Alex?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, you served me there.
Alex?
Alex.
Alex. Okay, we do his decision first? This, so can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, but I might, yeah, I might suggest I'll be where I'm going in about three or four minutes. So we can wait on Jefferson until then, that would be good.
Okay, perfect.
So the first decision on the agenda is eighty High Street, this is an application to construct a rear deck addition and accessory shed. Requiring various variances, the property is a seven thousand eight hundred fifty-two square lot in the R twenty zoning district. Therefore, it's pre-existing non-conforming with respect to lot area. The proposed deck addition is to add eighty-six square feet of deck and join existing decks on residence. Need to connect. Need to connect and create one continuous deck. There is required setback relief and three hundred and sixty feet of pyramid relief for the proposed ten-by-ten wood shed. The board heard testimony of the hearings, including feedback from the A-bus that the proposed shed location is acceptable. And the board considered the willingness of the office to move the proposed shed away from the property lines and using the variance request for setback. For the reasons set forth in the written determination, the board hereby determines that the application needs a five-car test and grants the variances requested.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the decision for eighty High Street as written?
So move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'm gonna skip twenty eighth Jefferson, number three, sixty-two Joel's Lane. This is an application to construct accessory structures in a front yard on a waterfront lot. Including a pool, accessory apartment, patio, poolhouse, and patio heaters. So stand on a property located at sixty-two Joel's Lane, which runs on Round Top. Here, the proposed structures meet all other dimensional setback requirements. And the applicant removed their proposed pick-up wall port after getting feedback from the board. Additionally, the budding neighbors at fifty-nine and fifty Joel's Lane supported the application. Therefore, for the reasons set forth in the written determination, the board hereby finds that the application needs a five-car test and grants the variances.
Great, could I have a motion to approve the decision for sixty-two Joel's Lane as written?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next decision is for the property located six Terry Drive to construct a new two thousand four hundred feet. Barefoot two-story, single-family residence. The application requested setback relief and pyramid relief for the proposed residence. The subject property is eight thousand nine hundred forty-three square feet, located in the R twenty zoning district. Has two front yards on Terry Drive and Meredith Avenue. The applicant's proposing to reconstruct the house in the same exact footprint as the existing residence. The board granted a variance for the pool by decision dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. This board is in receipt of a letter from the neighboring property owner most impacted by the proposed improvements located at forty-eight Terry Drive and supported the application. Therefore, for the reasons set forth in the written determination, the board hereby finds that the application needs a five-car test and grants the variances.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the decision for forty-six Terry Drive as written?
So move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next decision is for thirty Lighthouse Lane. This was before the board last month and the board issued a determination granting relief for the proposed pool and patio. The applicant came back seeking additional relief, setback relief for the new equipment. The relief requested is to allow the equipment to be eleven point eight feet from the side yard or fifteen feet is required. For the reasons set forth in the written determination, the board hereby finds that the application needs a five-car test and grants the variances.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion?
Which one is this?
Thirty Lighthouse.
Thirty Lighthouse.
Could I have a motion to approve the decision for thirty Lighthouse Lane as written?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the next one is. Okay, great.
I'm sorry, I was opposed.
Right.
Just for the record, I was opposed on that, yeah. No, it's in there, it's in there. I just wanted to get it on the voice record.
The next one I have is forty-eight Redwood Road. This is an application for proposed pool, spa, pool equipment, and patio to be located in the front yard on a waterfront property facing Sag Harbor Cove. The proposed pool and other accessory structures are common accessory structures which will not impact neighboring properties. No other variance will be requested as part of the application. And the proposed pool is sixteen feet by twenty-six point five feet and meets the required setbacks from all property lines. The property is going to be visually screened with existing documentation. And the applicant asserted that the proposed pool will be quote, virtually undetectable from neighboring properties in the street. For the reasons set forth in the written determination, the board hereby finds that the application needs a five-car test and grants the variances.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the decision for forty-eight Redwood Road as written?
So move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last decision for this evening is for twenty eighth Jefferson. And this is an application seeking to construct an addition to an existing single-family residence. Pool, outdoor kitchen, patios, water, numerous variances from this pool.
Yes, sign it.
Subject property is only five thousand two hundred thirty-two square feet, located in the R.
So sign it?
Yes.
Street and Jefferson Street. The existing residence is approximately eight thousand three hundred sixty-eight square feet. And will be ultimately be two thousand four hundred ninety-four square feet, adding a hundred twenty-six square feet after the fourth second story addition. The existing placement of the house, eleven feet from the northern property line. And pre-existing matchable lot size and width, along with the corner lot having two front yards. Causes the needing for the majority of variances requested as part of this application. After hearing feedback from neighboring property owners and this board. The applicant made concessions including the removal of the proposed outdoor kitchen, the removal of a retaining wall. And removing the proposed raised patio and reducing the pool from a ten-by-eighteen pool to a ten-by-fifteen, seven-foot pool. Which reduced the need for a rear yard variance for the pool. There was opposition from neighbors in this matter that the board considered with respect to the pool. And as a result, this decision represents a split determination, with three board members in favor and two opposed. For the reasons set forth in the written determination, the majority of this board finds that the application needs a five-car test and hereby grants the variances.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the decision for twenty eighth Jefferson Street as written?
So move.
Second? I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the pool.
Opposed, I oppose.
Alex?
Yeah, I so moved.
I, I said, can you please come in tomorrow and sign this decision? I have to get it to the third office. We'll leave it then Friday.
Sure, if you don't mind, I'm only out there for about twenty-four hours. Shoot me a text in the morning and I'll make sure to get in there.
Okay, there you go, thank you.
Great, is that it? Okay, could I have a motion to close the public meeting for the sixteenth of April?
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you.